All right, I'm showing seven o'clock straight up. So with that, we have all our council members present. I'm gonna call the city council meeting in Citrus Heights for March 26 to order. And if you would all join me in placing your hands over your hearts, we will go ahead and do the flag salute as soon as Amy puts our flag up for us. There we go. All right, so if you place your hand over your heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Amy, if I could have you roll the roll, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. Thank you, Amy. And I believe there's a disclosure to be read, and then we'll move on with the agenda.
Yes, so tonight's meeting is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel. The meeting is also webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, March 30th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. So the first item is approval of the agenda, and the only change that I would ask for is if we can pull the city manager items up to right after this, before council comments, and I will have City Manager Chris Boyd giving an update on how the city is responding to coronavirus. So before we get that, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the agenda with the change recommended.
Second.
Councilmember Bruins made the motion. Councilmember Middleton made the second. Amy, if you could give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye, thank you. So, City Manager Boyd, I will turn it over to you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and our Citrus Heights community. I, you know, we're in unprecedented times, and I want to start, before I give an update, by just letting you know how proud I am of our community and all of our city staff for rising to the occasion. And again, it's an occasion that really none of us have ever seen in our lifetime, but we were prepared. And I will take you through briefly the steps that we have taken as a city and report on some considerations for the future that we are working tirelessly on right now as we speak. So, as you know, current directives in place from the state level and down through the county are to shelter in place for all citizens, directed to stay in your place of residence, except for essential activities, essential governmental functions, or to operate essential businesses. And steps that we have taken so far on this crisis. The mayor has declared a state of emergency, which the council is scheduled to ratify tonight. This doesn't represent an increased risk to employees or residents, rather, it gives us access to potential future aid packages or other assistance that may, we may be eligible for. Briefly, in terms of city hall functions, our front counters, our reception and lobbies are closed, but our government and our city is very much open in conducting business in all service areas like we always have. We're just doing it differently without human contact. We were well-prepared to make this transition very quickly. Services are by phone call and email, and at times by appointment, but we're still committed to providing excellent customer service and have been doing so. We've identified technological solutions to conducting business, such as we're doing tonight with Zoom and email and voicemail and live video conferencing with our customers while sharing those types of things. Essential personnel have been identified and are conducting business within all restrictions. Community Center is not in operation. All of our clients, under the statewide directive, have rescheduled their events. And we do have staff from the community center still taking calls and providing customer service every day to book future events. I'd like to take you through just a couple of public-facing functions, really by department. Our community development department staff has been identifying ways to still serve, as I said, remotely. For example, building permits and inspections are happening every day, although they are reduced, but happening every day. There, we are not inhibiting any inspections or really any contract business in the city from moving forward whatsoever. Inspections take place either by Skype or by working directly between the contractor and the inspector, and in some cases, we are even deferring those, but making sure that we sign those off. So all those inspection functions are happening moving forward. And planning is able to handle their work as usual, most all of them, remotely. Public work staff are processing service requests, as always, and providing essential services, both the city staff and our consultants in the field. And, you know, everything that you see in the field, all of our functions, while following safe guidelines, are being performed. Now, I'd like to talk about public safety and specifically the police department functions. So I am going to hand it over to the Police Chief, Ron Lawrence, at this time, to have him give you a brief update on the public safety side of our services.
Thank you, City Manager Boyd, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to start by saying how incredibly proud of the men and women of the police department I am and all of city government, my colleagues throughout the city, and the employees that we have have really done a remarkable job of stepping up in this time. As far as the police department, we did initiate our Partial or Limited Emergency Operations Center on March 13. This was in response to the coronavirus pandemic. This gave us immediate and daily access to the Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services through the Web UOC or virtual connection. We had that set up prior and had our staff previously trained on how to do this. Through this process, we're allowed to procure additional supplies or items needed through the Sacramento County OES, and we've already done so on a few different occasions. We took immediate steps to take action to protect our employees and the public while we continue to provide full public safety services for our residents and our businesses. Our operations staff in the field were immediately issued protective, personal protective equipment, or PPE kits. We closed our police department lobby, but we're innovative in how we interact with the public in the parking lot. So our public now, we can come to the parking lot of the police department, we will have staff meet them outdoors and maintain our social distancing of six feet while we attend to their needs. Throughout the city, we continue to enforce traffic laws and respond to calls for service. We continue to do our typical crime prevention and criminal apprehensions. We're conducting as many cold calls, these are non-in-progress calls, and are cold, by telephone or online as possible. I want the public to know and council to know that we're not stopping people exclusively for the health orders. That's important to know, because that was a rumor that was out there. That is not happening. We're not doing proactive stops based on the health order itself, although we are still enforcing traffic laws. So if you see a car stop, it's likely based on a traffic violation. We have increased our presence in the business district as well as at our local grocery stores during this time. And while it's too early to see any significant crime trends emerging in Citrus Heights since the onset of the pandemic, anecdotal information suggests that our calls for service seem to have decreased very slightly, while crimes against persons have remained about the same, and property crimes may have dipped slightly fewer than normal for this time of year. We've been communicating with the local media to dispel rumors and instill calm in our public. You'll see additional media and social media outreach coming from the police department here very soon. I've been in constant communication with all of the other police chiefs in Sacramento County and our sheriff. We have two conference calls a week, more as needed, and we want to make sure that we have a united front when it comes to how we're addressing the enforcement of the health orders. And right now, our current status, and this is countywide, all of the police chiefs and our sheriff are in agreement that our current status is we are educating our public, we're asking for voluntary compliance and your cooperation. And that's the mode we're in. We do have prepared contingency plans for enforcement and mutual aid if necessary, but we really believe that our public's gonna step up and do the right thing by adhering to the public health order. In fact, we have seen just that. And it's remarkable to see how many people in our public have really done, complied with the health orders and stayed home unless absolutely necessary. We have been in constant communication with the State Office of Emergency Services. This is out of the governor's office. You've probably heard that the National Guard has been called up throughout California, and it's important to understand that they are not in an enforcement mode at this time. The National Guard is there to assist only with humanitarian efforts, such as assisting at local food banks. They are helping with logistics at the drive-through testing sites that you've seen crop up throughout California. We have a drive-through testing site here in the Sacramento region, and the National Guard will also be helping with mobile hospitals, which are potentially going to be set up from the, being sent in from the federal government. And I'll close with a special thanks to our Citrus Heights residents, who've done a remarkable job at staying home and continue to comply with the health orders and practicing social distancing. I've been all around town. I've seen very few people, because people are staying indoors. Those who are outdoors going to essential functions like grocery shopping or seeing your doctor, everybody seems to be practicing safe social distancing, and it's your cooperation and voluntary compliance that's really gonna get us through this situation. And by doing so, you're literally saving lives. So thank you to our great citizens who are performing remarkably in this time. My report.
Thank you, Chief.
Chris, back to you.
Thank you. So, just continuing with some updates. In terms of communication, in addition to the law enforcement channels that the chief mentioned, myself and my office and the city manager staff are in daily communication and contact with our congressman, Congressman Barra, our state-elected officials, and regional city managers. We all meet regularly and discuss this crisis work together. And really, you know, all of our partners are in daily communication, which is really where I spend most of my time during this crisis with our partners and working these problems together. Obviously, for everyone's safety, we'll be conducting council meetings remotely, but we will still be as transparent as we have always been. Even though we don't have a physical location for our public, we are still webcasting and on cable TV and accepting public comment via email to our city clerk and through an online speaker card found on our website. So for this information, please visit the front page of our website. So I now want to talk about communications and economic development. We have been working around the clock on pushing out and developing platforms for information around the clock. And our difficulties that we know our businesses, like all businesses in our country, is felt, and we are working very hard to assist and help them. And I would like to let the council know specifically what some of these steps have been, both communications and our work with our businesses. So for that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan Huber, who is our manager over economic development and communications. So Megan, please.
Good evening, City Council. As City Manager Boyd mentioned, communication is a guiding principle for us as we move through our response to COVID-19 and how we can support our community. And I'd like to review some of the high-level initiatives with you this evening, as well as remind our community at home how they can connect with us. So, first up is communication. Amy, if you could advance the slide. So, as I mentioned, when we recognized that this situation was escalating, we immediately put in place a multi-channel comprehensive communications plan. First priority there was to set up a dedicated webpage. This has consistent updates and links to information, especially to Sacramento County for easy reference. So our residents can research and learn about directives and orders that may come from Sacramento County to our jurisdiction. That website is citrusheights.net/covid-19. In addition to website updates, we have also committed to consistent e-newsletters and e-alerts. The example on your screen is when we shared that Citrus Heights proclaimed a local state of emergency and were sure to include messaging to assure our residents that that did not have anything to do with physical safety or security. It was an administrative step to be able to manage in crisis. And we are also leveraging our social media channels very heavily. So we'd like to remind you and our community at home to follow us on Facebook. Our page is City of Citrus Heights Government, as well as Twitter @CityOfCitrusHeights. There, you will receive frequent updates and useful information as we all move through this together. We also want to assure our residents that City Hall is still here for them, even though we are now here virtually rather than physically. So on our webpage, they will also find a comprehensive listing of department and division information. So there will be no trouble in being able to connect with a real-life person. In addition, if anyone still does try to visit City Hall, we have a helpful signage to be able to redirect customers and how they can reach us virtually as well. In addition to communication to our residents and community, economic development is also a guiding principle to be able to advocate and support our business community. So, from that perspective, we have also set up a dedicated business webpage. This has resources and information for businesses affected by COVID-19 and all that means. It also has city updates, and again, that one-step contact page, especially for development services. So if we have projects moving through our pipeline, we want to make sure that that path stays clear and business can continue to be done for and within the city. And the easiest way to do that is to make sure that people can still connect. We also have reinstituted our business e-newsletter, as well as we are pushing out frequent e-alerts. Those include programs and resource information, including webinars, that could be helpful to our business community on how to navigate those resources. It also has city hall updates, like how to connect with us virtually. A notice that our building department has begun utilizing Skype for video inspections to assist in that development process as well. And some of the other important things that we shared in those e-news and e-alerts that we would like to bring to your attention as well as our community is the existence of the Small Business Administration's Disaster Assistance Program. These, this is an opportunity for working capital loans to our businesses, up to $2 million, to alleviate economic injury caused by COVID. So, from everything that we are hearing and analyzing right now, this will be the prominent program available to businesses with a huge resource of funding attached to it from federal government. So we are committing to referring that far and wide. We also have the extra pride point of having the SBA district here in Citrus Heights, so a ready resource there as well. Another thing that we recently shared is that the city has committed to relaxing temporary signage restrictions during this emergency period, which allows our businesses to use temporary banners and A-frames to be able to promote that they're still open. Of course, that is as long as they qualify as an essential business during Sacramento County's health order. But as an example, that would allow some of our restaurants to be able to physically advertise that they are available for pickup and delivery and are still open. So we're looking to empower our businesses however we can to continue to operate during this time. And this is one of the primary ways that we'll be able to communicate that empowerment. So we'd like to remind our businesses and our community to sign up for those e-newsletters and e-alerts at citrusheights.net/newsletter. So finally, one of the most exciting things to come out of our work responding to COVID so far is the rollout of our Shop Local campaign. So I'd like to introduce to you Love Local, Shop in Citrus Heights. Folks can find that at citrusheights.net/shoplocal. This is our one-stop shop for information on businesses who are open right now. And folks can get that information via Google Maps. So one click to select order and schedule pickup or delivery from restaurants or find services that they need. And there's also a comprehensive list at the bottom. So we've done our best to reach out to as many businesses as possible, make sure they're included, and solicit information in those newsletters as well. If there is a business out there who is not on the list yet and would like to be, please email me at mhuber@citrusheights.net.
All right, Megan, thank you very much. Just to finish our update briefing, council, we are assessing the budgetary impacts of this situation. And we'll brief you on detailed financial estimates once we have them. Our finance staff and all of our consultants are working hard to try to understand what they might be. We do know that the financial impacts will be significant, and depending how long this crisis goes on, they could be severe. So we are, you know, looking at this and trying to make the best analysis and predictions that we can and prepare to make any adjustments that we might need to make into the future to make sure that the city stays in operational and good financial condition. So we will brief you as we, again, come to understand more about these financial impacts at this very unprecedented time. We do know that there are relief and assistance packages being considered in the region. As far as directly to cities coming out of the federal government, it's a little blurry, but we're assessing that right now as we speak and we are connected with and to the right channels to make sure that we understand and position the city to take advantage of any assistance or reimbursements that might be available to us. So, council, we continue to adapt as quickly as possible to this very evolving situation and the information from the federal government and the state government and the county. And, you know, it's definitely difficult, but again, our staff and our community is rising to this tremendous challenge that's been put before us. So I'd like to conclude by thanking the council for your very strong leadership. You've all been doing this a long time, and it's showing through right now in your support and in your actions and leading our city and in your support of the staff and trying to get this job done. So with that, Mayor, that is the end of my update, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, City Manager Boyd. Thank you, Chief Ron Lawrence, and thank you, Megan Huber. Appreciate the updates, and I hope that the citizens understand, you know, the city is still functioning. We're here to support you. More importantly, the CHPD is doing their normal job and not looking to, you know, harass you, if you will, if you're just out and about doing your normal business. But they are there to fight crime, and they will continue to do so. So thank you again to the men and women of the CHPD. So with that, we'll move into our next item, which is council member updates and regional boards. I know many of the boards have been canceled, but at the same time, Councilmember Bruins, we'll start with you, followed by Councilmember Middleton. You there, Jeannie? Maybe off mute? Okay.
There we go, all right.
Nope, you are there. No problem.
Can you hear me out?
We can hear you.
So the only thing that I am reporting on as far as attending is the PAL event that happened right before the moratorium on events took place. And we had a very successful fundraiser, which was a cornhole tournament. I want to thank everybody who attended and who sponsored and who contributed to that. I don't know the results yet, because we haven't had a PAL board meeting since then. But for a first-time event, it was a very successful event. And I've got to believe it was one of the last events that we had at the community center before we had to close the center. So I want to thank you on that, for that. And I just want to encourage our, the public, to support our business community the best we can and to be super sensitive in the fact that we're trying to stay open and to keep their staffs employed. And so let's all do our best to support our local businesses. Thank you.
No comments from me.
Jeff, you're on mute. Thank you, sorry, appreciate it. We'll get the hang of this by the end of the meeting. Thank you, Portia. Councilmember Daniels?
Yeah, thank you. Just kind of an echo, you know, it's a tough time. Thoughts and prayers are with everybody. And if you have to stay home and you're not able to work, do find a way to get out, take a walk. But get out of the house and get some air and stuff like that. Definitely support the local businesses, because some of them are gonna die from this, and we have the opportunity to make that not happen. So figure out a way to do that, and hopefully, we can help some of these businesses make it through through this in Citrus Heights especially. And then the only negative thing would be that I would like, if we could get some enforcement out at Cbar C, where the gate goes into the park. People are out going to the park, which I think is fine, walking around and stuff. But right where the gates are, people are parking in front of the gates. And if any emergency equipment had to get in there for a problem or something like that, that could be a real problem. So I think we do need to see at least some limited enforcement action out there to make sure we don't have some tragedy that is worse because of some cars parked in that area. Other than that, again, just try to stay positive, and we'll all get through this.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Vice Mayor Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday the 13th, I also attended the PAL fundraiser for the cornhole tournament. My team went 2-2. We'd never played cornhole before, and it was the last time I was out socially. Since then, I've been under house arrest. On Wednesday, the 18th, we had a STA board meeting, which was just like this, conducted by teleconference. The STA board voted in favor of a 40-year expenditure plan for new Measure A. And with that, all seven cities in the county will vote on whether or not to put this on the ballot. We have a presentation on April 9th to our city council, and I believe we'll decide that night whether to concur with placing on the ballot. I'll save my comments on that till that meeting. On Monday, the 23rd, we had a video conference with Regional Transit. I just want to announce, as of Monday, we went to a Sunday-plus service for Regional Transit. That schedule can be found on SACRT.com. It's basically Sunday service with some commuter and commuter lines, express lines still running. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Steve. So from my end, just a couple of quick updates. The Budget Audit Committee of the library met following a full board meeting via video accounts, video conference for the library. Following the governor's order of the stay-at-home order, the libraries, all 28 of them throughout the county and cities, are in fact closed. The Budget Audit Committee recommended today that they remain closed through April 10th. The governor's order momentarily expires on the 7th, but we do need, you know, a day or two for the staff to get back up to speed and, you know, clean some of the libraries, sanitize them, et cetera. So at the moment, again, the libraries are scheduled to stay closed through So at the moment, again, the libraries are scheduled to stay closed through April 12th. Hopefully, if the order isn't extended past the 7th, we can probably get them open before that, but time won't tell. Also wanted to mention, you know, as Brett said, as the chief said, as the city manager said, these are unprecedented times. Appreciate everybody staying at home. Just a quick fact for you, as of today, there are 113 known positive cases of coronavirus in the Sacramento County with the likelihood that some of those might be here in Citrus Heights. So again, it's definitely encouraged to follow the directive and stay at home except for, you know, necessities like grocery shopping, et cetera. Lastly, you folks may have noticed in the mail, you got some documentation. Every household in the city was mailed a form specific to the 2020 census. It's pretty easy to respond to the census. You can do it online, you can do it over the phone or by mail. It takes you 10 minutes or less. And I encourage everybody in the city to be counted and make sure we, you know, get an accurate count so we can get our fair share. In that same mode, because of the pandemic, the US Census Bureau has announced modifications to the census timeline, including the delay in the door to door candidacy. You should get two letters and then the next was going to be a door, somebody knocking on your door. They have postponed that. Don't have an exact date for that, but if anybody in the next few days comes knocking on your door saying they're from the census, they are not. Ask them to leave and then notify CHPD that something's come in. So with that, that will conclude councilmember comments. We will go to public comment now. And before Amy reads the statement, we are going to slightly, because of the teleconferencing, switch up how we do it. We've asked folks to submit online comment cards. So the city clerk, I think we have two of them for tonight's meeting. The city clerk will read the disclosure and then she will actually read into the record the two public comment cards we have. We have three additional comments, but they're specific to item nine on agenda and we will take those after the staff report on that item. So, Madam Clerk, back to you.
Yes, thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and I'm going to share my screen so that everyone can also see the public comment as I'm reading them as well. So our first public comment was from Alfred Sanchez. He states, "As you know, I take snacks to the homeless every day, usually granola bars, fruit snacks and cookies. I do this out of my own pocket. They call me snack man. I've also sent dozens of people to get help via our homeless navigator. I express concerns and act as liaison to the police. The recycle places are closed and they have taken a hit. Restaurants are closed. There goes their restrooms and hygiene. Many are considered about Corona and how it affects them. I would like to take fruits but cannot afford it. I service around 15 to 25 people daily. I'm asking for a grant of $250 to help these guys by distributing fruits. I will keep receipts. I attend hard meetings and consider myself one of the many trying to do our part. Thank you for all you do. Godspeed, Alfred Sanchez." The second public comment is from David Warren. "On Monday night, my wife was transported to UC Davis ER for treatment. The experience was a worst case example of how my community's failure to deal with the homeless crisis presented itself. Although my wife should have been transferred to the teletrauma unit, she spent her entire hospitalization in the ER because there were no beds available due to the confluence of the current pandemic and the consequence of the law which prohibits a hospital discharging a patient that is homeless. Although there is little Citrus Heights can accomplish to curtail the pandemic, as a city, there are temporary solutions that can be accomplished to reduce the impact of the pandemic on all of us. It is shameful that the city council has not put any of these solutions on the agenda. Davis, Elk Grove and the city of Sacramento have approved ordinances which prohibit eviction of a tenant for not paying rent if caused by loss of income due to the pandemic. Sacramento County has also approved a similar ordinance, unfortunately without a similar degree of urgency. Why hasn't Citrus Heights approved such an ordinance to assure that there is no increase in the homeless population in Citrus Heights? Clearly, if the major banks, Chase, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, et cetera, can offer a payment holiday for mortgage payments, a similar respite for renters should be at the top of tonight's council agenda. If the Cheesecake Factory can tell its landlords that it will not pay rent until the restaurants reopen, as councilmembers, why haven't you assisted those who become unemployed in our community to avoid eviction for failure to pay rent? Further, both DHHS and CDC have issued directives to state, county and local government agencies concerning housing, the homeless, to stop the spread of the pandemic. It is patently clear that Citrus Heights, unlike Sacramento, has not opened a single bed to house the homeless. Having to walk past individuals who are coughing while entering a grocery store or pharmacy is a clear and present danger offering a means of transmission for the spread of disease. Refusing to provide a temporary location for the homeless to shelter in place to prevent transmission of the coronavirus within our community is shameful because it endangers both those who are homeless and those that are not. As a recipient of first responder services this week, I observed that ambulances were backed up at the entrance to the emergency room. Obviously, while the paramedics and ambulances are out of service waiting for a patient to be admitted to the ER, there is a consequential reduction in the number of first responders available to assist patients. If the pandemic follows the pattern demonstrated in New York City, instead of ambulances, CHPD officers will be pressed into service as first responders to aid those who require transportation to a hospital. Does CHPD have sufficient resources to provide police services while CHPD officers are waiting at the ER? In Detroit, 132 police officers are off duty due to positive infection results. The national news has reported insufficient PPE supplies for both hospital staff and first responders. As a member of this community who is most at risk to coronavirus infection, I and individuals similarly situated deserve to know that the CHPD is prepared for the unfortunate circumstance that the sworn personnel can be adequately protected for such events as a traffic stop or something more serious. Of equal importance, does CHPD have sufficient staff to backfill positions should officers become unavailable to, due to infection? The statement on the city's website that the city is providing inadequate conformity to county protocols is insufficient. If Citrus Heights wants to become more than a bedroom community, it must be proactive on all matters, including the city's emergency plan for dealing with the pandemic and other emergencies. The city council should schedule a special session to do the following. One, enact a municipal ordinance similar to the cities of Elk Grove, Sacramento and Davis, providing for a moratorium for rental evictions for those individuals who have insufficient funds due to loss of income as a result of the pandemic. Two, provide a full and complete detailed plan of the city's emergency response to the pandemic, including available supplies of PPE for municipal employees, for public examination and comment. And three, establish emergency shelter within Citrus Heights to slow the spread of the coronavirus among the homeless. It is long past due that our city stop telling individuals who live on the edge of or are homeless to let them eat cake. Thank you, David Warren."
Thank you, Amy. So that is the end of our public comment. Again, we received a few additional comments, but they were specifically for item number nine and we will take them at that time. Next item on the agenda, Amy.
The next item is consent calendar items four, five and six.
Okay. And as protocol with these type of meetings, once we get a motion and a second, again, we will be taking a roll call vote. So do we have a motion from the council?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Miller and a second from councilmember Bruins. Amy?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye, thank you, Amy. Next item on the regular calendar.
The next item is public hearing number seven. The subject is Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development on Program Year 2019 Community Development Block Grants. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the consolidated annual performance evaluation report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stephanie Carter, Community Development Department. Let me pull up my report real quick. I apologize, I'm having internet problems, so I had to switch to my personal computer.
Oh, the old internet problems, okay.
Let me see.
Nope.
Okay, can you see it?
Yeah, if you could make it on your whole screen, that would be great. We... There you go.
Don't worry about that, guys. Okay, so the 2019 CAPR, this is for the CDPG program. It's an annual report and it evaluates the city's progress in meeting our annual goals as well as some multi-year goals. It also provides a snapshot of our expenditures and revenues and it is on the calendar year. So this covers January 1st to December 31st, 2019. Consistent with our citizen participation requirements, we did make the CAPR available for public review on the city's website from March 15th. And it is still on there for public review and we're accepting comments through March 30th. You can send comments to housing@citrusheights.net and we will include all of the comments received by March 30th in the final report submitted ahead. For 2019, the city received about $646,000 for our entitlement grant. We also received about $130,000 in housing loan payouts. Our expenditures were about $380,000. We had the Rush Park Improvement Project this year that came in at $100,000. The housing repair program was offered this year and our public services offered a wide variety of programs to the community. We do have two projects that are continuing from 2019 into 2020. So that is the difference between the revenue and the expenditures, just to point that out. This is a snapshot of the total number of households and people we served with CDPG funds, over 10,000 households. We wanted to serve and we got over 8,000, which was pretty significant. Again, we have two projects that are multi-year projects, so those numbers will go up. Here are some pictures from our Rush Park Improvement Project. The kids are really enjoying it. They use it for the preschool over at the Rush Park Community Center. We also offer a single family housing repair program. And mobile home grants up to $10,000 for emergency repairs. And this is a list of all of our nonprofit partners who provide public services on the city's behalf with CDPG funds. They served almost 7,000 people and really do fantastic work for our community every day. If anybody has any questions about the CAPR or would like to provide a public comment or anything else, any other housing questions, the contact information is up on the screen, housing@citrusheights.net. Or you can call 916-727-4830. We are working remotely, but we're checking our email and the phone calls, so feel free to reach out to us. And I'll take any questions if not, the recommendations are on the screen.
Any questions from councilmembers?
Jeff?
Yes?
Not really question, but I did hear that the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry was struggling. They were low on food. If we could get some information out on our website about where folks can donate, I'd appreciate that.
Great idea, absolutely.
Thank you. So I do have a question for our city attorney. Since this is a public hearing, obviously there's no public here. I'm assuming, Stephanie, you haven't received any comments for tonight? So just curious, are we okay to proceed? I just want to make sure we're not...uncharted territory here. I don't know how to hold a public hearing with no public.
You're, you're correct in the sense it is uncharted territory. I do think that you maybe take the formality of opening the public hearing, closing the public hearing, even though we don't have any public comment, and then proceeding with the vote.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I'll open the public hearing. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we adopt a resolution. You might, yeah. I move that we adopt a resolution to approve the 2019 CAPR and direct staff to submit with minor modification, the necessary CAPR report.
Okay. Councilmember Bruins has made a motion. Councilmember Middleton has seconded. Amy, if you could give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye, thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, Stephanie, again for your report.
Thank you.
Next item, Amy.
Next item is regular calendar, item eight. The subject is adopting a resolution ratifying the proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency regarding novel coronavirus COVID-19. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Chris Boyd, the city manager. On March the 19th, 2020, the mayor issued a proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency in the city of Citrus Heights in response to the coronavirus known as COVID-19 public health crisis. The purpose of declaring a local health emergency empowers the city to more effectively respond to COVID-19, seek and utilize mutual aid, potentially obtain reimbursement and ensure that the city of Citrus Heights staff have all the necessary tools and powers at their disposal to slow the spread of COVID-19. While it may seem contradictory, this proclamation does not signify increased risk to Citrus Heights residents. Rather, by proclaiming a local emergency, the city is taking important administrative action that allows the city potential access to, to aid and available resources should we need it or if we are eligible. While the mayor has issued the proclamation, the city council must ratify it. Staff recommends the city council adopt the attached resolution ratifying the proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Boyd. Any questions for the city manager or myself? If not, I would, what's the pleasure of the council?
So I would move that we adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency regarding the novel coronavirus COVID-19 here in Citrus Heights.
Second.
Councilmember Bruins made the motion. Councilmember Daniels seconded it. Amy, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey?
Yes.
Mayor, members of the council, we may, state law requires that emergency declaration can only be good for 60 days without council action again to renew it. So we may be coming back to, depending on how this thing develops over the next two months.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. Next item, Amy.
The next item, regular calendar, item nine. The subject is Adopt Old Auburn Road Complete Streets Plan. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the Old Auburn Road Complete Streets Plan.
Great, and hello, Leslie.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna load my presentation really quickly. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Leslie Blumquist, Principal Civil Engineer with the General Services Department. I'm here tonight with the presentation on the Old Auburn Road Complete Streets Plan. Also, on the line with us tonight is Casey Kempenar, Planning Manager, and Adrian Engel, the Lead Consultant who worked on the plan development. I'm gonna make Casey really quick to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, as you all know, the city's had a long history of improving safety and movement for bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles here in the city. They really culminated in 2011 when we updated its general plan, and part of that general plan update included a complete streets policy that treats all users equally, all users that use roads equally. It also directed us to update our BikeMaster plan, which included the trails along the creek corridors, and it also directed us to prepare a pedestrian master plan, which looked comprehensively at the city on where pedestrians have challenges and where there's issues that need to be addressed. And Old Auburn Road was one of those, and it was called out as a focus area needing a lot more attention to detail. That's kind of how we started moving forward in this direction with this grant and this program. So, like I said, in the general plan 2011, adopted a complete streets plan, which is plan, plan, design, and construct a complete streets transportation network that accommodates needs of all modes and all users and all abilities. And really what that gets to is making it comfortable for people anywhere from eight to eighty to either ride or bike or drive through our community on all of our roads. So that's kind of one of the guiding principles of this Old Auburn project that Leslie will talk more about momentarily. In 2017, we were awarded a Sustainable Communities Planning Grant to develop this plan that you're gonna hear about tonight, and you've heard about previously, and that looks at Old Auburn between Sylvan Corners and Gary Oak, where the current Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail terminates. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Leslie.
The plan was developed with several actions in mind: to listen to the needs of local residents and implement context-sensitive solutions for the concerns we had been hearing; to use data to understand the existing roadway demands and collision patterns; to be creative and innovative; and to create a plan that can be implemented and aligns with current grant funding availability. We didn't want to create something that would just sit on a shelf. The goal, which were a couple years of resident concerns and outreach through our previous planning efforts, included improving traffic safety for all users, and that's vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists; to reduce the number of collisions along the corridor; to reduce conflict points along the corridor; reduce vehicle speeds; improve walking and biking facilities; improve access across Old Auburn. We hear often from residents concerned about the lack of pedestrian crossings from one side of Old Auburn to the other, but we also hear from residents that it's hard to drive from one side of Old Auburn to the other. And lastly, to reduce cut... The conditions of Auburn Road vary significantly throughout its length, but also change depending on the user. The picture on the left shows that on portions of the roadway, pedestrians must walk on the narrow roadway shoulder or in the dirt adjacent to the road. The middle picture shows a classic bike lane that's present along the majority of it. Bicyclists must ride very close to vehicular traffic. And finally, the picture on the right shows the five-lane section of Old Auburn between Antelope and Fair Oaks, where we have the highest speeds and most complaints from residents regarding access in and out of side streets and driveways. In order to develop the concepts identified in the plan, we used a data-driven approach. This slide lists out the main types of data that we used in the analysis. In particular, the design and operations of the intersections and traffic signals were reviewed. Specifically at Old Auburn and Fair Oaks, a great deal of time went into the review of the current intersection design, and as a result, some recommendations have already been implemented at this location. We also obtained BIG Data to determine the amount of cut-through travel along the roadway. BIG Data is a term used to categorize large sets of data. For this project, we obtained GPS cellphone data of users along the roadway over a several month period. All personal information was removed, but we were able to see general locations of where trips started and ended that passed through various points along the Old Auburn Road corridor. In general, about sixteen to twenty-five percent of the trips on Old Auburn in the morning peak period pass directly through the city. These percentages are only slightly less in the PM peak period. The pie charts on the right-hand screen tell us about the type of trips on Old Auburn just west of Fair Oaks Boulevard. The bright blue section on these pies represents the percentage of cut-through traffic. These are the trips that neither stop nor start within the city limits, and they range between twenty-one and twenty-five percent, depending on the time of day, meaning about one in every four or five cars on Old Auburn Road between Fair Oaks and Antelope is strictly using this section of the roadway as a cut-through to get to and from their destinations. The way we drive is changing. More than ever, people are using apps like Waze and Google Maps to direct us to the quickest...to direct them to the quickest route to get to their destinations. This is pushing more vehicles to leave freeways and major arterials and seek alternate roadways, such as Auburn, at the primary intersection. And cut-through travel for the purpose of this plan was determined to be a vehicle that uses Old Auburn but drives to great places that doesn't start or stop within the city limits. And this is really important to remember as we discuss capacity along the roadway. As we add lanes, we may temporarily reduce congestion, but we're really inviting new drivers to use this roadway, as the apps will continue to divert cars to the parallel roadways even just to save a minute or two on a trip. The plan development also included a robust community engagement effort. We held over seven separate outreach events, which directly engaged over 200 members of the community. We conducted a nine-day demonstration project where the 27,000 vehicles per day that use Old Auburn Road between Antelope and Fair Oaks, which may have otherwise not experienced or had input or known about the project, were able to test out a portion of the concept on the ground. Engagement efforts on this project reached new levels, especially as we compared to other similar roadway projects in the past, which I think shows in the amount of comments and feedback we have heard throughout the duration of the plan development, all of which has been taken into consideration as the preferred alternative was developed. In general, the concept for Old Auburn Road includes one vehicular travel lane in each direction with a center two-way left-turn lane. It also includes a bicycle lane physically separated from the faster-moving vehicles. The type of separation has not yet been identified in the plan, but rather options are presented for cost purposes only. And finally, the concept includes a sidewalk separated from both the bicyclists and vehicles by a landscape buffer. Two alternatives were evaluated for the portion of Old Auburn between Antelope and Fair Oaks. The preferred alternative keeps the concept of one lane in each direction for the entirety of the corridor. The sub-alternative adds a second travel lane in the eastbound direction only. In comparing the two alternatives, we see that there is a reduction in traffic safety benefits for the sub-alternative, but an increase in corridor operations, which results in travel time savings. The preferred alternative reduces conflict points in both directions, but has an average travel time increase of approximately one minute in both the morning and afternoon commute times. The sub-alternative only reduces conflict points in one direction, but the increase in travel time is only ten to twenty-three seconds during each of the peak periods. As discussed earlier, navigation apps will have the potential to continue to divert cut-through traffic on Old Auburn, as we look at maintaining extra travel lanes along this portion of the roadway. Our consultant has developed these artistic renderings to show what Old Auburn could look like if the plan was implemented. This first picture is at Tiara, looking east towards Sunrise Boulevard. Here you can see the separated bikeway. Bicycles are separated by a vertical curb to provide enhanced protection. A shortened crosswalk with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, so pedestrians would push the button, the lights would flash yellow, letting drivers know that somebody's about to enter the roadway. No more merging cars in the westbound direction racing to pass while also passing over the crosswalk. Wide sidewalks separated by a landscape planter, raised median, allowing pedestrians extra protection as they cross. Green pavement markings where vehicles cross into the bike lanes, letting both users know this is a potential conflict point. And a longer turn pocket from eastbound Old Auburn onto southbound Sunrise, where the current raised channelizers are located, those would be removed. This second picture is at Fair Oaks Boulevard, looking west toward Antelope Road. Here, again, you can see the separated bikeways and the shortened crosswalks. No more merging cars in the westbound direction racing to pass to turn right onto Antelope Road. Wide sidewalks, excuse me, wide sidewalks separated by a landscape planter, raised planter boxes and sidewalk trees. Specific tree and plant species, which are appropriate for the location and size of the proposed landscape areas, have been recommended by the consultant as well. And this third picture is the same view as the previous. It's at Fair Oaks Boulevard, looking west toward Antelope Road, but shows a continuation of the multi-use path instead of separated bike lanes. Here, again, you can see the shortened crosswalks, no more merging cars in the westbound direction, the multi-use path separated by the landscape buffer and raised planter boxes and sidewalk trees. And now I'll turn it back to Casey to talk about the environmental review.
Thanks, Leslie. So, because this is a feasibility study, it's statutorily exempt from CEQA, but that doesn't mean that we won't be doing CEQA and even NIPA if the project does move forward. That is all gonna be required as we get into more detailed design phases, so that's something that is in the works. If we apply for and get grant funding for this, we'll be looking at both CEQA and NIPA.
This plan identifies a preferred design concept only, and includes concept-level designs and estimates. If adopted, the plan would be used to seek grant funds, to continue the design work, perform the environmental review, and for the construction. Given the size and anticipated cost of the project, it's likely the plan would be phased. The phases would be selected based on the available grants, but in general, it is recommended to start at the east end of the corridor where the safety enhancements would be the greatest. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but the motion for you tonight is to adopt the plan and finding that the plan is statutorily exempt from CEQA.
Great, thank you, Leslie, thank you, Casey, for the presentation. I know we do have some public comment, and just one sec, is there any questions from council members before I turn it back over to Amy to read these public comments?
Yep, I have one.
Sure, thanks, go ahead.
Just, Leslie, you were mentioning the flashing beacons on the...for the crosswalks over by Holy Family. Just to clarify, you're talking about on the ground, right, on the roadway? Is that the kind you're talking about?
Uh, no, the ones that are shown in this concept are on the poles, right below the signs, flashing on either side, the bars, just below the signs.
All right, well, I was hoping you were talking about on the street. I think that that's the way to go. I know that probably costs more, but this is a big project, and I would just hope that we consider that. I think that's something that we should be doing throughout the city. I've seen a demonstration on that, and it just really pops when a car is coming up on it, even in the daytime, and so, just something to think about if there's a way to put that in there, I think that would be a whole lot better.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I would actually echo those comments. When I look at this picture, you know, beautiful picture, but I think we've all seen when we've put signs in the middle of the road and islands, et cetera, just about everyone we've put in has been hit once, which just means it's more expense from the city's end. And I think, you know, the low, the lights embedded, you know, on the street, to what Brett said, certainly make you see it, whether it's daytime or nighttime, so, you know, it's all conceptual at this point, but I'd also like us to consider that, so. So if there's no additional council comments, Amy, I'm gonna turn it over to you to enter the three comments on this item.
Yes, so, as before, I will go ahead and share my screen so that you can see the public comment that I have. So our first public comment is from Anthony Silveria. He states, "Not once in the preparation for this project have I or the other residents living in the area been approached about how horrible an idea this is. I have a hard enough time trying to pull out of my street chipmunk way without the trees you are going to put in, or the crosswalk for the church, or the median you want to create to take up more room. The two lanes are there for a reason, one to go to Antelope and the other to continue on Auburn. The test you did stopped the road completely." The next public comment is from Kathy Morris. "First, I want to say that I greatly appreciate the level of work and professionalism that has gone into the development of the Streets Plan. I have been fortunate to participate in many of the meetings discussion on the plans. Although I understand there are many concerns on the restructuring of the streets, I must admit that I personally are most concerned with the Fair Oaks Antelope section. Since I live on Glen Alta, Gary Oak is my main transit in and out of the area. My business commitments have me traveling in any direction at any time of the day. I could come out of Gary Oak and go through to Antelope or down Old Auburn, or up Old Auburn, or turn onto Fair Oaks at most any time of the day. Frankly, I support the current structure of the Fair Oaks Antelope intersection. The access from Fair Oaks onto Old Auburn now is great. The exit from Gary Oak onto Old Auburn and onward works. Although I appreciate the need for bike and pedestrian lanes, I believe the proposed changes will again make it difficult for me and my immediate neighborhood. Therefore, I do not support this section of the changes. I also appreciate the need for funding and understand that bike and pedestrian areas may be required in order to secure funding. Still, the proposed changes are not in my best interest. As a reminder, I speak for myself, not for my neighborhood association or board." Kathy Morris. Next, Bill Shirley. "My name is Bill Shirley, and I am Vice President of Chase Neighborhood Association Areas Seven and Eight. I first want to thank the city engineers for meeting with myself and other members or our board to discuss the Complete Street Plan, primarily the Old Auburn Boulevard and Fair Oaks Boulevard intersection, since it is in the middle of our area. I appreciate the time they took to explain the concept they are presenting to the city council. As I have shared this information with my neighbors in the Oaks, they have all said they are pleased with the current lane configuration. Not one person was in favor of the proposal you are being presented with tonight. I ask that you table this council adoption issue until we can have a regular city council meeting, so my neighbors can express and discuss their concerns. I would also ask members of the city council to spend time watching the traffic flow at this well-known intersection during peak hours. When people are back to work, there is normal traffic flow, so you can understand why my neighbors are against the proposal you are being presented with tonight. My neighbors said they would like a bike lane at this intersection, but not at the cost of losing a westbound lane from Gary Oak Drive to the Antelope Boulevard intersection."
Thank you, Amy, and that's...those are our three comments for the night. I would just add, not only to the public, but to the council members, that staff has done an extraordinary job in reaching out for public input on this. I, myself, have been to three separate public meetings on this, very topic, and I have seen great participation at all those meetings. So with that, what is the pleasure of the council?
Well, taking into consideration that this is a conceptual plan, and we'll still have time to look at some of the details when it goes to design, I'd like to move this item.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember...I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Miller made the motion, councilmember Daniels made the second. Amy, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye, thank you, the motion passes unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item we had was department reports, and I don't believe that we had any. Next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Hearing none from the council at this point, I will make a special shout-out to Lieutenant Chad Morris for providing security in the council chamber, so appreciate that, Chad.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And with that, I will...lastly, I would just like to thank the council members, I know this is a little bit... you know, a little bit of a different process, can't say how long it's going to be going on, but uh we're doing our best, and we'll make tweaks uh as we get comments, not only from council staff, but the public, so. Appreciate everybody's time this evening, and with that, I will call uh this meeting concluded, and and the meeting, thank you all.